Hello, I'm here to discuss the December 23rd, 2019 Exeter Township Supervisors Meeting. It was the last meeting for 2019. And after my opinion piece here, you'll be able to see it. It starts out with about seven minutes where Chief Jordan is recognized for his retirement. He'll be gone, we'll have a new chief. I don't think they announced who that will be, but he retired this year. After that, you'll see we go into public opinion. And there are three people that express some information in the public opinion, part one. John Carmelo, who has an interest in what's going on with the OPEB trust. They plan on putting nine million dollars into this trust. And he wanted to know how they arrived at that number. I'm curious about that myself. And then I also spoke, and I talked about asking the board to actually defer making a decision on all the agenda items that night. Because my reasoning was, there were four board members there, Mr. Spees was absent, and three board members were nominated, never elected to the board. And I thought that since none of the items on the agenda were critical, they could wait, and they could defer them to the new board in January, who would all have been elected by residents. So we actually had elective representation. Of course, like every other issue brought before the board by someone from the public, it fell on deaf ears. And the three unelected supervisors passed every single item on the agenda. So they could care less about that. Also, Mr. Joe Staub stood up. He was the third and final public comment. He'll be a supervisor next year. Congratulations, Joe, I think. And he also pretty much said what I was asking them to do, which was to consider deferring some items. And again, they ignored not only me, but the next incoming supervisor. The next part in the meeting was old business. And there's two issues under old business I'd like to talk about. The first one is the Homestead/Farmstead Act. They're going to pass that, they did pass it. I think it's a huge mistake. Their reasoning was, well, we promised it. Well, subsequent to promising this, which was under the auspices of Lisa Vanderlein and John Granger, so you have to question that alone. But things have changed. The reason for the Homestead Act was to give residents relief from what they knew would be increased sewer rates. Well, what's happened is the sewer, sale of sewer, the cost was adjusted down quite a bit. So we didn't get what we expected to get when they first conceived of the idea of the Homestead Act. Also, I think we're under the impression we would win this lawsuit against JMH. And as everyone will find out, if you haven't already heard, it's been settled. And we're going to pay them 1.875 million dollars, but our total cost of this fiasco is more like four million. So with that, and the outstanding issues with St. Lawrence, especially the budget deficit that they're passing on to the new board of 1.8 million dollars, and some of the other future issues that are really of concern, which I'll mention later. It is a foolish, irresponsible action to institute this Homestead Act. If you're a renter, it's not going to affect you at all, you get diddly squat. If you're a homeowner, it'll take about $173 off your tax bill. It's a $50,000 Homestead exemption. And the other item on old business, I guess, was the OPEB trust fund. And I don't think we need to make nine million contribution to that right away. I'd like to see the money stay in our bank account so that we can earn interest off of it. And there's an argument that, well, put it in there, we can get more than 6% if we invest it right. Well, there's the rub, if we invest it right. Last year, in 2018, it wasn't invested right, the police pension fund lost a million dollars. So at least if we keep it in our own pockets, we can earn 2.5, maybe 2.6%, and a nice couple hundred thousand dollars that we can use to offset the budget deficit. So that's my opinion. Then when you move on to new business, there's just a few issues there. They created the new fund accounts that they talked about for the promenade, and for some kind of special fund for projects, which I think they're going to put the money in that Mr. Muscaro generously gave to us, right? With conditions, of course, it's always conditions. But then, that's the only real thing I looked at under new business, there wasn't a lot of important issues there. Like I said, it could have waited until next year. But then, what they threw in there, which was not on the agenda, and if you looked at the agenda, a couple, Friday, and you said, well, there's nothing on there that I would be interested in attending the meeting for, well, you missed out on this, because they had a lawyer there who talked about the Reddick Country Club settlement. So this took, you'll see it, you'll be able to hear it and watch it. So I have a problem with that. It should have been held at a special public meeting. It should have been allowed to be presented to anyone in the public that would want to attend. I think a lot of people are interested in just what happened here. But this is typical of this board, of the 2018 board. They are not really transparent, although they keep claiming, or try to claim, they're transparent. And they stuck it in there quietly in a meeting that usually is canceled. My understanding is traditionally, this last meeting has been canceled, it was held the night before Christmas Eve. And this wasn't canceled, because I think the little dictator needed one more shot of the feeling of absolute power, sitting there as the chairman of the board. So the thing that we have to ask ourselves about this issue was, how did this thing get so out of hand? What was the dispute that caused this? And apparently, it's over a liquor license. Who owns it? Who controls it? Who's responsible for it? This issue could have been resolved with minimal expense if the parties were willing to do it. But I have a theory, a motive for why it went crazy like this. And I'll explore that in the future as we put this whole story together. Because I think the public, the residents of Exeter Township deserve a very clear, concise, step-by-step explanation on why they had to pay four million dollars for this really, really foolish venture, just to kick out a long-term lease. It's ridiculous. It's mind-boggling, folks. And I can't really get a clear answer, because if you follow my videos, and the things that they say about me in social media, and at the public meetings, you'll know that they attack me, they try to intimidate me, and sometimes they think they succeed. It is disappointing for me, and it hurts sometimes. But we have to find out what's going on here. And the more questions I ask, the more bitter, the more angry, and the more that they attack me, okay? You can see it, it's obvious if you open up your eyes and look. So I won't say too much, I won't go into the details, they did talk about some things there. And we'll just have to wait until we get better information, because I don't think that night that even the agreement was signed yet. Then finally, there was the last public comment, before they went into their reports, department reports and everything. And at that public comment section, I talked about a few things that I think we needed to say. One of the things I did say to the board, particularly Mr. Crusaders, and his terrible year of 2019 for this community, is that the Reddick Country Club, as one of the people who motioned to start this fiasco, is his personal legacy. The wastewater treatment plant will be the legacy of this board. And when I say this board, I mean Lisa Vanderlein, John Granger, John Crusaders, Vinnie B. Coney, David Spees, Jeff Vanardton, O'Donnell, Aaron O'Donnell, Robin Dutcher, Chip White, all the people that, we had four people that resigned in less than a year. They took an oath to serve the public, and then they skipped down on us for various reasons. And not a good one, as far as I'm concerned, because none of them are dead, they're all alive, there was no reason for them to leave public service. They sought the position, they sought the office, and then they abandoned us, and they abandoned us in chaos. And it cost us, literally, millions and millions of dollars. And so that's why I wanted to let Mr. Crusaders know. And then I talked about a couple other issues. I mean, we have issues that are going to be outstanding for 2020, and they include, how are we going to fix up the promenade? What's that going to cost us? What will it look like? Their plans were to build a Taj Mahal. We can't afford that as a community. I mean, I don't know who they thought we were. Maybe they thought we were King of Prussia, or something like that. But you know, their plans included a conception of building a waterfront property, community on the Schuylkill River, crazy things like this. So we have to deal with St. Lawrence. What is our liability? They're claiming 6% of the 92, 93 million dollars that we received for the wastewater treatment plant. In addition to that, they've handed off the budget for 2020, which is a 1.8 million dollar deficit. And their plan is to make up that 1.8 million with 600,000 dollars in interest earned on the proceeds of the wastewater treatment plant, plus 1.2 million dollars from the wastewater treatment plant. And if you go through the budget, they have other budget items which are going to make use of the wastewater treatment plant proceeds. So you can see, in a matter of years, we're going to go through that money, and it's no longer going to be there to subsidize our expensive habits. And that's when the tax rates will start going up big time. So the other thing was the W-2 issue, this is the last thing I wanted to talk about. Our supervisors, and I don't know, there may be other people in the township that thought it was cute to say, I don't want to take a pay, I don't want a salary, don't pay me, right? Well, in the case of the supervisors, it's a statutory requirement. The auditors set the pay rate at the beginning of the year, and that's their pay for every meeting that they attend. And so a few, especially like Vanderlein, refused to take her salary. I think there's other motives there for that, but we'll address those later. But here's the problem with this. And it's okay, they don't have to take the money if they don't want to. But the IRS has a, basically a general rule called constructive receipt. And what constructive receipt means is that if that money was made available, then they could have taken that money, but they didn't take that money, the IRS looks at it as constructive receipt, that you did receive the money, even if you didn't take it. And so the problem that I see is that our township never issued any W-2s to the local, state, and federal governments. So they failed to pay taxes. Local taxes, you know, earned income tax, there's a tax in Exeter Township, $52, where $42 goes to the school, and $10 goes to the township. So it's unlikely that they paid those, since no W-2 was issued. And then, of course, the state and federal taxes would not have been paid as well. So I've requested the W-2s for some of the people that refused to take a salary. I just want to make sure that they were issued, and they did pay their taxes. So we'll see if that has happened. If it hasn't, then I guess I need to write a nice little letter to the Internal Revenue Service and let them know what's going on here in Exeter Township. And there is never a dull day here, folks. When it's raining, it could still be sunshine out there. So thanks for listening to me. I hope you enjoyed my opinion piece, and hope you enjoy watching the video of December 23rd, 2019 Exeter Township Supervisors Meeting. Thank you.
I'd like to call the attention of the agenda members. December 23rd, Board of Supervisors meeting, please rise for the pledge.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor being called.
I am here.
Supervisor Brad Donald. Supervisor Andrew Fitt.
Here.
Supervisor Sess.
Here.
Supervisor Spees is not here. Okay, I'd like to start off with a presentation of Chief Jordan. As many of you know, this is his last year as chief, so we're all so proud of him. Personally, I have a great affection for you, you taught me a lot over the years, and we've become good friends, so thank you for your 43 years of service, and 20-plus years as chief, and you'll be sorely missed. John, do you want to add anything? Any other comments from the board?
I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the township.
Yeah, I mean, we've had several conversations, and like I said, just to find it, I mean, it's good, you set the bar too high, maybe.
There any comments?
Thank you, and congratulations, and enjoy your retirement.
So floor is yours, chief. Talk about your 43 years at Exeter.
Sorry. We're in three minutes. Well, first of all, thank you very much to the Board of Supervisors, your support with this board, past boards, and I'm sure the future board. We appreciate all the support, and we wouldn't be who we are if it wasn't for your support and all the help that you've given the Fire Department and myself over the past 27 years. So thank you very much. But, you know, I would be with this if I didn't thank some others. First of all, my wife Brenda, for her support and her love. I could never have gotten through it if it weren't for her. Some nights, away from the family, and she raised four children, I would not have been able to do what I've done if it wasn't for her help. Love you and thank you. My four children, especially Chris, he helped me through the tough times in the Fire Department. And, you know, the love and support from the children. They were missing some parties, missing a baptismal service once, because of a pretty bad fire, but, you know, the family understood. My sister and brother-in-law are here tonight, so thank you for your support. And, you know, lastly, the firefighters, the chief officers, all my staff over the past 20 years, they've been very, very supportive. Many long meetings, many heated discussions, but, you know, we got through it. And they made us stronger, made me stronger for all of their support. And the firefighters, just like the public, to know that you have some great firefighters in Exeter Township, they're very dedicated, you know, we can always count on them. And, you know, I was very fortunate and very honored to serve as their chief. And I'd like to wish my successor, Chris Pickings, will be the new fire chief, and we'll have two new deputy chiefs that will be appointed effective January 1st. And I'd like to wish them all the best of luck. And I'm not going away, you know, I'm still going to help them. They're looking at different job duties for me, so I'll keep them in line. But, you know, it's time, you're getting up at 3:00 in the morning for automatic fire on the Lowe's, those days are over. So, but I want the public and the board to know that they are in very good hands, and have some very dedicated and well-trained firefighters to serve the township and beyond. And also the public, you know, the business owners, the industry people, the public's been very, very supportive of the Fire Department, and I'm sure that's going to continue. We really appreciate all the support from the businesses, and also from the public. Without their help, once again, we wouldn't have what we have, or do what we do. The Fire Department's looking forward to having a new fire station, so we hope that comes into fruition. I know the guys are very excited about that. And, you know, I'll be around to see that through fruition, and hopefully that will be my legacy. But once again, thank you. There's so many people I have to thank, but the board, the family, firefighters, the community, you know, I just want to thank them for all their support in the past years.
And then we do a certificate for you, chief. We do something else for you, but it's not there yet, so we're going to do that at a later date. At this point, I want to give you this on behalf of the township and the Board of Supervisors. We'll take a five-minute recess for everybody, do a couple more photos with the family, then we can be in the meeting. Thanks. Mr. Howard, are you recording this meeting?
Yes, I'm recording the meeting.
Next up, public comments, Mr. John Carmelo.
John Carmelo, Brookside Court, reading the resolution on the OPEB fund. One of the things in here, it says the initial contribution to the trust fund shall be approximately nine million dollars. How was that number reached?
The township's actuary took into consideration the eligible employees, their age, the date on which they would retire, the cost of the medical benefit that they would be entitled to, calculated that out, and that's the cost over a 30-year period.
And this covers medical and life insurance?
Medical and life insurance, yes.
Where's that nine million coming from?
The board will appropriate, yeah, they will appropriate nine million dollars from the sale of the proceeds of the wastewater treatment plant, yes?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carmelo. Next up, David Hughes.
David Hughes, 255 West 47th Street. Just had a couple general comments, I don't think, about the Alden business on the agenda. Now, everyone should pay attention that we have three non-elected board members. We only have one elected board member that's going to make decisions for us tonight. And none of these decisions really need to be made tonight, there's nothing critical on this agenda. So I'm asking the non-elected members of the board to do the honorable thing, to defer these decisions to the new board that is going to be fully elected. There's no need, I think, to establish the Homestead exemption at this time. We're projecting a 1.8 million dollar deficit in our budget, and we're going to cut taxes by $800,000. This is an issue that should be considered by you. The OPEB funding, I don't agree with the numbers that you're funding it with at this time. And all these things should be allowed to be considered by the new board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Next up, Joe.
Joe, South 5010, glad drive. Happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Just want to talk about the Homestead and the Homestead exemption and the per capita tax, just to think it through. I know that we have a big reserve fund now with the sale of the sewer plant, but I think it's just something we need to consider, whether or not we want to utilize this money when we're running, I believe, a deficit of about seven figures this year. I mean, I believe, what is it, 800,000 for the, and the per capita tax is 60 or 70 grand? So you sort of think, well, could you do 60 or 70 grand? My concern, one, is that that money tends to go away pretty fast. Two, that's going to put the tax base down, I believe, a little under 20% of what the total budget is, as far as what the taxpayers are paying. And keep in mind, too, that we are at full employment right now, and we're relying a lot on earned income tax, which a year or two from now may not be the same. So we have to kind of take a look at what's going to happen in the future, and do we really, really want to be utilizing all those funds? So I would ask that we really think about that. By the way, 39 municipalities and boroughs in Berks County have higher tax rates than Exeter. I know it's not going to affect the tax rate. No, I understand, and I'm coming up, I'm just, look, let's not go schoolwork, John, it's a different world. But I'm just saying that when you look at that, it is something to consider. And then the only other thing is, under legal fees, and maybe it's just my iPad, there's a whole bunch of them, as a matter of fact, just the legal fees this month exceed 1% of our budget for the year. I mean, our total budget. I mean, so we're talking about real numbers. I was wondering if someone, if we could say what those are for, because at least on my iPad, it just has a letter, so I have no idea what that money is spent for. So if you could break those down.
Actually, I haven't, I haven't broken them.
Okay, I appreciate you letting us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next up, regular rule of minutes, December 9th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Treasuries report, November 2019.
No?
That's it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasury report.
Of course, only subject to aye.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Make a motion to approve the disbursements.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Old Business, adopt coordinates establishing Homestead exemption. Full business, adopt ordinance establishing homestead exemption.
I think it's a good idea, so I will make the motion.
I'll second. This is part of the agreement with the sewer plant sale. We said we would give the money back to the residents. That's kind of why we're doing this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Adopt ordinance establishing homestead exemption.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance establishing a homestead exemption.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Adopt ordinance rescinding the per capita tax. The five-dollar tax. I'll make a motion to rescind the per capita tax.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Prove resolution establishing the OPEC trust.
I have one question on that. Do we want to look at maybe having two members of the police department, two members of highway on that board, or just one of them?
That'll be decided at the next step. This is just.
Okay.
Once the trust documents are prepared, that will establish the membership function.
Okay, because it was laid out, one police, one highway, two admin, and one resident, right? For five total.
It was gonna have two board members on it and two employees and one member of the highway. It doesn't really matter at this point in time. I think the board should be represented on the trustee board. So I would think it'd be one member and one.
But the police and highway would have that too.
Highway is not part of the OPEC trust.
Okay, so just the police are gonna have it.
They do get P S R.
Because the document I saw, it said one police, one highway, two admin, and one resident.
Right, one admin, one board member, and one resident.
Okay, so everyone would have one. Okay, then I'm fine with that. I'll make the motion then.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Full business, approve resolution of Sturmer subdivision sketch plan of record.
Will?
Will. I don't have it up on the board. I unfortunately don't have it up on the board, but this is a five-acre parcel going to be subdivided into two lots. The current property actually has two residential dwellings and it's actually making this a conforming with the zone. So it's kind of just cleaning up some outstanding issue.
It's a minor subdivision, it's approximately five acres. There's two, like Will said, there's two existing locks, lot. A dwelling's on the lot. It's located on Shoffers Road. The applicant is trying to subdivide it. So now each house will be on a separate lot. They're also offering dedication ultimate right-of-way. A legal description has been prepared and it's incorporated in the resolution for dedication of the additional right-of-way area for the township to utilize in the future if any improvements are to be made along Shoffers Road.
And Mr. John Hoffert's present, if you have any outstanding questions.
Any questions, board? Just need a motion, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution of Sturmer subdivision sketch plan of record.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Next approved resolution, approving the Sturmer subdivision deed of dedication.
This is in reference to the ultimate right-of-way that is to be dedicated to the township as part of the subdivision. The applicant has prepared. The legal description has been incorporated in the deed of dedication for consideration by the board this evening.
I'll make a motion, approving the resolution approving the Sturmer subdivision deed of dedication. I'll second. Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Last, the approved resolution establishing new funds. Mr. Granger.
The administration's requesting the board establish two new funds. One, we call the Exeter Promenade Fund. That would be the fund that would account for all the revenues and expenses related to leasing of the shopping center. And a second is the municipal complex building fund that would hold all the revenues that will be gifted to the township for the construction of the municipal building. There are no funds available. There are funds available when they become due. When we get cash, we'll put it in revenues of these accounts.
I think it's great. So I'll make a motion, approve the resolution establishing new funds.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. So the latter fund is for donations, yes, that sort of thing?
For donations, yes.
So if there is a fund that is earmarked, for example, for the fire station or will that be in a separate fund?
No, it all goes into the same.
Okay, and how will that be? For example, just because I know the fire station is of particular interest.
Right.
How will that be recorded or, you know, so that we have the right to know?
There'd be super lighthearted in the fund, fire station, municipal complex. Somebody uses money for highway drives, it'd be in headline.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. I'm, uh, I do. Ayes have it. Department reports, Clarence.
Totally have anything other than the tree lighting and Santa Tor went real well. I'm sure you'd like to speak toward that, but that's really, it was extremely cold a couple of nights. The girls were fantastic on the back of the trucks. I don't know how they did it.
We had to take the Exeter McCross, those two.
Give them a big shout out for that. But yeah, it was, everything went great and
Oh, you want to add anything about the Santa Tor?
We're just waiting to see what kind of cool addition Clarence will make to it for next year.
Yeah, great feedback, tremendous feedback. I saw a million pictures on social media, the website, how wonderful everything was. So good news again to the team, great, great job. Chief.
Point of clarification, if I may.
John Carmelo, yes.
He said the girls on the back of the truck, does that mean Santa Claus was female?
He was on the top of the truck.
He was on top of the truck.
The girls across the, they were the elves, like I said. I'm sorry.
I just want to talk a little bit about our shop with the cop program. We had that Friday, the fourteenth, for those who aren't familiar. Police officers were paired up with children that were identified at need and they got to shop with a police officer over at Target. I would like to thank Target for participating in that and helping the police department with that. Also Dairy Queen provided snacks for the kids afterwards. It was a big cooperative effort between the police department, Target, and other township employees to put that all together here. That was our first time we did it here in township. We had about thirteen kids. Hopefully, we can expand upon it next year. It was really worthwhile to see the expression on the kids' faces and they were extremely happy and honored to take part in it. It was a really good event and I hope we can do it and expand upon it next year.
Did you guys do it with Central Bookstore, did they do their own?
No, they did their own. So we had our own for designated only for township kids this year.
Got it. Engineer report, Joe.
Just one item. The township received correspondence from Pendott dated December ninth, 2019 in reference to the Route 562 bridge replacement project. Pendott will be installing temporary traffic signals to help facilitate the work zone and traffic control to allow at least one lane to be able to utilize the road during construction. It's a little bit of a complicated situation. I just wanted the public to be aware of it, but it'll probably have, it'll be about six-phase inner traffic signal where each individual driveway will have traffic signals so that even though the main line is gonna have to stop and one lane go through, these individual driveways will also have access to the work zone by means of a traffic signal. So this will be a temporary condition, but the township receives condition diagrams from Pendott and the contractor is from Island and we anticipate they'll be starting work soon. Haven't got a definitive date, but the permit's dated for December ninth to completion of the project. So I wanted the public to be aware that there will be a temporary traffic signal condition installed, very implemented along 562. Also, we had some residents who are within that project zone had some concerns and are working with the staff so that we can make the proper notification that there will be permitted access during construction. However, it will be controlled by a traffic signal.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any with the town? And they were thinking?
Oh Norfolk, I haven't heard any more update. They're just still demorating and.
Working through the mud.
Mud. Hasn't been the ideal conditions for it. Unfortunately, they've been hitting a lot of groundwork.
They're keeping at it, it's just a slow process.
Probably be a little bit later than what we thought, but if we can get a better definitive deadline, we'll make sure we share that with the township.
Thank you.
Getting done.
Sam, solicitor report.
Yeah, a few things. First, there's a potential resolution of the Bolinger matter, which is really several matters combined into one where a former police officer filed several grievances concerning various different issues. There's a resolution, or a potential resolution for the board to consider whereby Officer Bolinger would give up, he's entitled, arguably entitled to health insurance for the balance of his life. He's forty-seven, he would give up that in return for the board signing off on his retention of pension and some other related benefits. We would recommend that you agree to that. We think that's better than that would be done in any dispute resolution contest. So I would need, if the board is in agreement, I would need a motion on that.
Make a motion on the Bolinger settlement.
I'm sorry. Just a motion to approve the Bolinger settlement, in essence whereby he would forego health insurance, which would come out of the general fund. He forgoes that, but will receive his pension, which does not come out of the general fund for the balance of his life.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second. Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Another potential resolution of a dispute. The Supportive Concepts slash Callan Housing, their related entities, they had filed and we are part of a larger issue in Berks County. Supportive slash Callan had filed for exemptions, tax exemptions, real estate exemptions throughout all of Berks County. As some people know, that Supportive Concepts slash Callan has several homes throughout Exeter Township in particular. They were looking for a tax exemption for the years 2018 and 19 and also going forward. One of the issues was that, without getting too much into the legal weeds, there was a, in order to be qualified for the type of exemption that they were looking for, generally the nonprofit entity itself has to own the property. For a lot of these entities, for a lot of these properties, excuse me, the nonprofit entity did not own the property. It was owned by a for-profit entity. So Supportive Concepts slash Callan took the steps of cleaning that up. They now are, at least in Exeter Township, all the properties are owned by Supportive Concepts, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity. However, we were able to, even though they wanted tax exemptions for eighteen and nineteen, we reached a resolution with them where they would forego those exemptions and pay a hundred percent of the property taxes for those two taxable years because of the fact that they were not owned by a nonprofit. And in addition, going forward, even though they are owned by a nonprofit, they're willing to pay twenty-five percent of the taxes as an upfront payment for several years, which is, in my opinion, far better for ten years, far better than we would do in any litigation because the reality is they are now owned by a nonprofit and would be an expensive, several-expense litigation and our likelihood of success would not be great. So I'd ask the board to approve a resolution of the Callan slash Supportive dispute where Callan and Supportive pay the full property tax they owe for eighteen, taxable year eighteen and nineteen. And also they'll make an upfront pilot payment, what we call a pilot payment, for twenty-five percent of the taxes that would have been owed for the next ten years in return for continued litigation. Excuse me, in the absence of continued litigation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Alors in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, and finally, John Maravich is here to address handling the JMH litigation. And he's here to address that.
Is that on?
Yeah, it's on. The light's under the rack.
Based on how close I am, I'll have to be. Probably have to be quieter. As the board's aware, there's been an ongoing dispute with the former tenant of the country club. Commonly referred to as either JMH or Viva. Viva was the restaurant name. JMH was the corporate parent company, so to speak. That litigation arose out of a variety of disputes with the major issue being whether or not they had the proper liquor license to continue to operate. Throughout this location, we have an expert who says they did not use a former attorney to work for liquor control. They have a, they have their own expert who says that they did have authority to sell liquor at the location. They have been claiming when they made two-point-six billion dollars of improvements to the property. That is documented. They have provided us with literally hundreds and hundreds of receipts regarding construction improvement to the building. In addition to that, they seek nearly five million dollars of damages pertaining to the loss of the business at that location and their other locations because, if you recall, they shut down all their operations when they were evicted from this location. There's also an attorney's fees clause in, the winner gets attorney's fees in this lease, so it's now amended lease. The attorney's fees clause goes back to the original lease. Roughly, they're almost at ten million dollars. We've been through mediation. Mr. Casadesus is familiar with it because he's been the appointed kind of person to come to court and me with Judge Rowley, Judge Rowley is the trial judge that's been assigned to this. This was estimated to be at least a three-week trial. That would be, we estimated the cost between four-hundred and four-hundred and five-hundred thousand dollars to try because we have three experts and it's a very complicated case for the jury to understand and would require expert testimony. We worked with the judge on numerous occasions to resolve this. His recommendation was that we pay for improvements that were made. The negotiated settlement would be one-point-eight-seven-five million dollars. That would resolve all the issues. In addition to that, the tenant would assign to, there were some issues with the improvements, particularly in the Four Seasons Room. They were assigned to us their insurance policies that they have. In addition to assigning insurance policies, they would also assign any claims they have against contractors who did the improvements. So that's the recommendation that we have to the board to resolve this. This would also allow the township to go forward with all the issues that they have, you know, as they're dealing with the country club right now. So what they want to do with the country club and resolve this dispute and take it off, kind of off the property, so to speak, so that it's no longer in dispute. That's pretty much it. We're both agreed on it.
Any questions? So I know we're not actually open it to the public, but are the public allowed to ask questions? I mean, obviously.
Did Jeff?
If anybody wanted to ask some questions, I mean, I would be responsible to allow that. So any questions?
So just to summarize though, so we were not looking at a favorable trial and our, if we had gone to trial and lost, we would have been looking at six to ten million dollars?
That's pretty accurate. That's pretty accurate. The, I'm not saying we're definitely, you know, a litigator at heart, I can win any trial, but I think you have to, you know, look at the parameters. One of the things to remember is that when this all eventually ended with them vacating their property and being evicted from properties, JMH went out of business. So although we have an attorney's fees clause as well, and if we were to win the trial and spend $500,000, we could have a verdict. That verdict would be, you know, taped up on the wall because there's no assets to pursue. So we could litigate the case, even win, and we'd still be out another $500,000 in litigation costs. And that's not saying whether it would have ended that, whether there'd be appeal to, you know, a appellate court, continue on for a couple of years. So that's part of the reason for our recommendation is because there's, you know, is there a chance that we could win? There's always a chance to win, but based on particularly the judge's involvement in resolving this, when the judge said that we should basically pay almost another $700,000 than we are, it seemed rather reasonable to think that this was a way to resolve it, move forward, not spend the additional fees, be able to kind of release the property from the ongoing dispute and then only deal with the issue of potentially seeking some reimbursement from these insurance companies and from the contractors for any faulty work that was there.
Phil, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
So the $1.875 million includes lawyer fees or do we, we will not be required to pay them?
We will not be required. That includes everything. So there was, again, the part of this, we don't get to necessarily see at this stage what their counsel fees were, but based on what the judge represented to us, it was over a million dollars they had to spend.
Or you mean like our, our fees?
Well, we have to pay our fees. I understand.
So we're not paying theirs, right?
Okay.
The $1.875 is everything, fees, that's everything, yes.
All right.
Thank you, Phil. Mr. Hughes.
David Hughes, 255 West 87th Street. So it looks like this fiasco, when you add up our current lawyer fees up to this point and the loss of revenue because we didn't open up the country club business, looks to me like it's cost our citizens here, our township, about $4 million, okay? This is your legacy, okay? And you've been talking about the Redding Country Club previously, about the, is it $2.7 million that you say was misappropriated?
Was misappropried.
Which is not accurate, it was not misappropried.
Is your question on this or?
No, well, thank you for the question. This is the largest loss to this township ever. This is huge, okay? So what are the plans going, two questions. Will this information in this court case be eventually available to the public?
Yes.
Okay, so the documents will not be sealed or anything?
It's available now.
Okay, on our website or?
No, it's publicly available.
After holidays, we'll put it on the website.
Okay. And secondly, so now what are our plans with the food and beverage business now that this is all cleared up?
We have an RFQ out. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
And the new board will make the determination of going forward. Honestly, you know, Darren, myself, Jeff, no offense to John, but you know, we weren't part of this as far as getting out at all. I mean, none of us were on the board when that happened, but unfortunately, you know, we're gonna be able to settle this and have the new board will be able to have a clean slate. I mean, it's, it's not a, you know, it's been a big pill as well for all of us. I mean, we've been talking about it, Jeff and I've had, you know, we've had some pretty good heated conversations on the phone about it and, you know, just, it's, you know, unfortunately for us, this is where we're at.
The lesson learned is be careful in signing deals with people. This was a bad deal?
Well, and that's why, the board, but there are new RFQ, you know, that's where I say to just make sure you have all the information.
For stopping a deal.
So. Anybody else have any questions to?
I have one more question, please, sorry.
I figured it's pretty important, I might have to make sure it gets...
So, so Phil Pars, again, 375 Bathfront. I just want to know, the Mr. Lloyd motion, you seconded it?
Yes.
Mr. White and...
Lisa, yes.
Okay. Now, this is why I think that the minutes need to be updated from December 27th of 2017, because that's not what it says. So when, you know, people do complain about the minutes and things...
What does it say?
It just says, it says, "Motion of Mr. Lloyd, seconded by Mr. Casadesis, the board ratified, taken action against JMH. Mr. Bukowski, I think, is saying as his firm represents JMH. And Mr. White has a business close to JMH, that's it. It doesn't say anything about Lisa, right? So I think that when people complain that, you know, the minutes aren't an accurate thing, and I can't get, you know, you can't watch the video now, it's been taken down. I think just the public wants to, you know, I'm glad it's getting over, I honestly am. And I think we're, I think $1.87 million, I will tell the public, I think that's good because, as he said, five to 10 million is probably what we would lose because...
And they put in, they put in $2.6.
Yeah, so I would just, you know, just, I think we should update that. I don't know if you can now, but maybe you should update it so everyone in the public knows who exactly voted for it, because it only says two people voted for it, and of course, we all know three people.
Well, the biggest thing is though, it does say two obtained, so if it passed, it has to be three, so, I'm just saying.
I understand what you're saying. I wasn't trying to be...
I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to say, you know, I, I, for English, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve the JMH settlement as is. I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Aye to have it.
I didn't hear the vote. For what?
For an offer? For a yes or for a aye? No, we're good. That's all I have, thank you. Next up, manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, the Mr. received correspondence last week from Fire Crossing. Sent a check in several hundred thousand dollars representing the first payment of a million dollars to the township for their contribution to the fire station. It also noted that family members are, will contribute a total of $325,000 additional dollars for the fire company for the construction of the...
Thank you. Public comment? Dave?
David Hughes, 255 West 87th Street. So I've got a couple of comments, and it's adios, ladies and gentlemen, I'm afraid to see you travel often in the sunset. But I'm also concerned about the activities that have gone on, you know now, the outcome of the Redding Country Club affair. But what we've done is we've bought the promenade and you've never provided a clear budget, a clear spending plan for this, this asset. And it really worries me, and it should worry all of us, how much we're gonna end up spending when rehabilitating this property. That's one thing. And then you've never talked about the St. Lawrence issue that is still pending. We don't know what we're gonna owe them yet. And yet you're throwing all these funds into the pension plan, we're never gonna be able to access them again if we need them. So I don't see a lot of serious planning. You're not communicating to the public what this is going to cost us. You're presenting us with a deficit budget. You've cut taxes by $800,000. I believe that this is something that is not being planned out very well. And I stood here a year ago, and I found out a lot about all of you, and I said I didn't have a lot of confidence in your management or your decision-making, and I think it's proving out to be the truth. We have a township manager who is ethically challenged. He's never presented any information in the LLC that was brought to everyone's attention. I'd like to see him give us a letter giving the township approval to access lawyer tax documents since he's been employed here. We have people like Lisa Vanderlede who never took a salary, and I'd like to find out if she was issued W-2s, okay? Because there's a IRS rule where a constructive receipt comes into play, and that prevents anyone from avoiding paying taxes, even if they don't take the money. And I'd like to know if the township has issued W-2s every year for every supervisor that has never taken a salary.
Can Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, you can address that. I can't comment on some of those things, but on, on St. Lawrence, I'll give, at least from a legal standpoint, the update. St. Lawrence has claimed, in nothing official, other than the PUC proceeding, the Public Utility Commission proceeding, that they have an ownership interest in the wastewater treatment plant to 6% approximately, give or take. And we disputed that, and I did cross-examine the witness who was there on behalf of St. Lawrence, and what his testimony essentially was, was that he acknowledged there was nothing in the agreement between Exeter and St. Lawrence that would grant any ownership interest in the plant. There's no deed, there's nothing, you know, that would indicate an indication of ownership in the plant, but that it was something that, in their opinion, that was never contemplated. So from a legal standpoint, and I'm not gonna comment on the business decision that the board would make, like the political decisions the board would make, but from a legal standpoint, what I've told the board is, you know, it's a contractual matter, and, you know, the testimony was basically that St. Lawrence doesn't like the contract that they made, and that's not a very compelling argument to make to a court, to an arbitrator, to anyone else. I'm not saying you should give investing money in litigation if it comes to that, though they've been making this claim for quite, quite a while and haven't filed anything. What I've always told them is, we have the testimony on record, it's clear that you just don't like the deal. So, you know, I can't sit here and tell the board that they should invest a ton of money in resolving it, certainly not 6% of $93.5 million. That's absurd. But ultimately, it's, I know there's been some discussions, anyone wants to, between, you know, various board members, but from a legal standpoint, it's a, what I would ask, what I would put at a pretty weak claim.
Well, we, just to let the future board come to know a little bit, we discussed taking their initial investment and appreciating it over time and looking at 6% of that, right? That's kind of where we last talked.
That's, you could, again, there's nothing that would require you to do that if you, if you wanna be...
But like best case, you know, show of good faith. And have they inferred at all that this was kind of done the way it was and, like, was there, you know, had a case that says Exeter kind of inferred they might merge with St. Lawrence and that's why it wasn't?
No, in fact, what they, what they, the testimony was, was that it's not in the agreement and it could have been. I mean, I don't know what to tell you.
No, I just wonder if they're bringing that up and just trying to share this with the public.
It's not been the argument. The argument has been simply that they feel like this was not something they contemplated and they St. Lawrence at the time these deals were entered into, which of course was a long time ago. And that they feel that they contributed a lot to the facility and they should get some, some piece of the settlement proceeds. But again, there is no contract that was signed that says St. Lawrence is an owner entitled to return from this. What it says is Exeter is going to provide sewer service for St. Lawrence in return for St. Lawrence doing the following, these are the things that, you know, St. Lawrence was required to do.
Now, was there a timeline put on Exeter's agreement to that?
It was, in essence...
Technically, Exeter's not providing sewer service to them now.
Correct, but it was until the, until the, for as long as we provided sewer service.
Okay. John, do you have a question?
And in fact, I'll just clarify, they testified they understood that that was something. In fact, I asked the question that the PUC, you understood at the time that Exeter could in fact sell property, just like you own a house and you can sell it, and he said, "Yeah, sure."
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hughes covered my question.
Thank you. Pat, last public comment, Olivia.
Yay. I think I'm, I think I'm okay. I just wanted to take a couple minutes to thank all the people and businesses who have helped, who have supported the gals and guys garden club that did the work over at the country club. If I said that correctly, okay. Glicks, Glicks, Spring Garden Farms, Lowe's, Home Depot, there have been numerous, oh, wait, hold on, let's see, who else? The friends of the Exeter Redding Country Club Partnership, Bruno's, Rife and Fire Company, the North Star United Methodist Church, the multiple gardeners, volunteers that helped us, thank the golfers that don't know us but have come to us and thanked us throughout the summer and the fall as to the changes that we helped, we helped do or that we did at the country club for the gardening, and also to Brian and Derek. Without their support and their help and their ground crews, we couldn't have done as much as we did, and we were really happy to have been able to support things that Brian particularly, you know, wanted to do. We collaborated a lot, it was a joint effort, I felt, and we were just very, very thankful for all the support that we received. That doesn't mean that we're not, still not looking for volunteers or for money, so. But it was, it was a great year, we had a great time over there, and we're just very happy for all the accolades that we did receive that helped to give us more power for going on.
Pat, I want to thank you for taking the lead. Thank you, you deserve a lot of credit. You organized it all and, you know...
Well, thanks to John.
That's what community is all about.
Yeah, thank you.
What people like you do. Keep it up. Supervisors report, I just want to thank Jeff, Darren and Vinny, this is your last meeting. You guys did a great job, and I know you're under tough circumstances, not appointed, but you gotta always hold your head high and, you know, because of your work, and that just in a better place, and the new board has a lot of good stuff to look forward to, $40 million. So now it's up to all of us, the community, myself and Vinny, to work with the new board and make sure we don't screw up the $40 million and we continue the great progress. Thank you, all three of you guys. Darren, Jeff, then Vinny, so Darren.
Well, I'll start a lot, but thank you for the opportunity to serve and contribute. I look forward to contributing in more in different ways. I also look forward to sitting in the audience and, you know, working with the new board as a resident. Thank you again for the opportunity. Thanks to Santa and all of our volunteers for the Santa around. It was great to see everyone and to see the kids, how happy they were. My little one was totally unimpressed, but maybe next year, maybe next year we'll have some sort of reaction, good or bad, but the neighborhood kids are really excited, so thanks for all that you guys do. I know it was a lot of effort in a very, very busy time of year for everyone. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Please remember to be kind.
Mr. Harrington?
First, just want to remind everybody with the winter time here and the snow, hopefully not, but probably approaching, just the cul-de-sac parking, I know there's been some notices sent about that, to stay parallel to the curb, not perpendicular so the clouds can get through and get more snow removed. And I'd just like to thank the rest of the board and all the township staff for everybody's hard work. help and collaboration. While I've been on the board, I'll still be on the planning commission, so I'm excited about that. I'd like to thank everybody who's supported me, my time on the board, and also even the critics and people of the voice concern about decisions I made because, you know, that makes you reflect and make sure you're looking at things from the right perspective, and sometimes you learn about other perspectives to examine your decision or views on, so I just want to thank everybody, and I want to wish the new board good luck, I think it's going to be a great board, and I think Exeter's in good hands.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Carrick.
I was on for 18 months and it was quite a learning experience, and so taking a newfound knowledge and I'm excited to be back to sit with everybody to just make sure everybody's continuing on the good work that's got started, so I really am excited to see, there's so many great opportunities that kind of is going to happen in Exeter, you know, with the promenade and the municipal and the fire station, and I really think there's still need to follow through, and my biggest thing I say to people is be your own voice, you know, don't let somebody else be your voice, be your own voice and come to the meetings or even just email the supervisors and talk to them, because trust me, we see the emails that they come to us and we read them, I mean, as I said, it's more, we have a consensus and someone to answer, but we do enjoy corresponding with the residents and getting things done. So again, I really thank the staff, especially the administration, has just been phenomenal. And Chief, I'm glad to be a part of your, beginning of your career, and I look forward to many endeavors that you're going to have, so again, thanks to everybody, I really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Vinny.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll even second. Any further discussion? Good luck and we'll see the three of you in the audience. January 6th, our reorganization meeting.